Okay, so we're ready. We're recording. So at this time, I am going to call this special meeting of the City Council to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. Here in the City Hall auditorium is Corporation Council Vic Michelle, myself, our Economic Development Director Rista Malanca, participating via Zoom. We have Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Wagner, Councilwoman Frank Rabino, Councilwoman Paul Cavanero, Councilwoman Anne Rouette. Am I missing anybody? Is that everybody? So missing at this point is Councilwoman Waldron. I'm sure he'll be joining us at some point. So for that reason, we have our quorum and I can proceed with the with the meeting. And I'm going to jump right in. So the purpose of this special meeting is to for the council to receive a presentation and recommendation regarding new legislation relative to abandoned and blighted properties. I had been referring to this legislation as under its public act number, which is PA 19-92. But I believe the the act has been appointed a general statute number and that number is CGS Section 8-169AA. And before I begin the slideshow, I just I'm just going to do a brief history of what brings us to this point in time. So for over the past six years, the city of Torrington has prioritized the need to work with the owners of the historic Yankee Peddler Inn. In November of 2014, when the property was being transferred out of bankruptcy proceedings, it became our mission to work with the property owners to preserve this historic building and its import to the city and region. Our efforts were to work with as partners with the new owners, facilitating meetings between the owners, DECD, and the State Office of Historic Preservation. We hosted tours of the city with the representative from Best Western, provided assistance and guidance through regulatory permitting processes as the owners were undertaking a massive rehabilitation of the project. We maintained monthly and in many cases, weekly contact with the owners and the state departments, facilitating those meetings to facilitate the access to state historic tax credits, to access any of the energy efficiency programs like CPACE, anything that we felt would be beneficial for this owner to help him offset the cost that was going to be undertaken as part of the project. By mid 2016, after the building had been gutted, it became increasingly clear that the property owner was struggling with its ability to proceed with the project development and that the condition of the building and the loss of the hotel accommodations was beginning to have an impact on life and property safety and economic vitality to the businesses on Main Street. In early 2017, we became aware of the departure of tenants. And I think it was in 2018, early 2018 is when the last tenant, which was Art's Desire, vacated the premises. The city, now recognizing this building was completely empty, vacant, we ramped up our efforts to introduce the property owners to potential financial partners, local lending institutions, contractors, and even potential purchasers. Those efforts coupled with the need to commence enforcement of the building and the fire code compliance led us to pursue a criminal action. That action is still pending. Here we are in the winter again, when the property damage from frozen pipes, unsheltered residents seeking shelter from the cold and fire safety concerns become heightened. Despite the criminal proceedings, no progress in getting code compliance has happened. For the better part of the past two years, while attempting to gain code compliance, my office, Rista Malanca from the Economic Development Office and Corporation Council have spent hours, if not days, if not weeks, investigating the most effective way to protect this important property and the abutting property owners on Main Street. In early fall of 2020, we determined that this new legislation, Section 8-169AA, that became effective or went into effect in January of 2020, presented a strong path forward for this property. So tonight, what we are presenting to the council is a proposal, a strategy for the rehabilitation of the Yankee Peddler Inn through the abandoned blighted properties legislation. On the screen, you'll see I have just a few a few pages of a PowerPoint presentation that I'll just walk through. So if you could pull the next page up for me. So just to explain and remind council members that this legislation went into effect in January 2020. It was designed to as a mechanism to help municipalities in the rehabilitation of abandoned properties. You'll see that the legislation applies to municipalities with a population of 35,000 and more. In this legislation, it clearly defines what constitutes abandoned properties. You'll see there are five qualifications, that the building hasn't been legally occupied for at least 12 months, that the owner has failed to present compelling evidence as determined by the court, that the owner has actively marketed the property during the 60 days preceding this date or the date of filing, or made good faith efforts to sell the building at a price reflective of the circumstances and market conditions. And that's important. I probably should have bolded that. C, that the building is not subject to foreclosure. And D, that the owner fails to present compelling evidence that the owner acquired the property within the last 12 months preceding the date of the petition. So those are the first four, and this building qualifies under all four of those. In addition to those four, there's a fifth qualification. And this building would have to qualify for at least three of the eight items listed on this this list. And these are determinations that the court must find. So we would have to provide evidence to the court in this petition that at least three of those qualifications exist at the building. I can tell you, based on the list that is here on this page, this piece of property qualifies for all eight of those qualifications. For those reasons, after doing this initial assessment and going through this for for a projected period of time, pulling together that evidence, we determined that it was prudent for us to move forward and trying to determine what is that path forward. So if we could see the next screen. So the petition is clear, or the legislation is clear that there's a petitioner that must be a party in interest. And it defines, you know, who would qualify under this this particular party in interest definition. And based on these five qualifying candidates, the municipality emerged as the strongest the strongest candidate for bringing this forward. Obviously, it isn't going to be the owner. There is a lien holder of record, but we have, based on information that we have accumulated, that the lien holder has been paid off. The local residents, I did meet with all of the residents and property owners within 1,000 feet of this building. None of them were interested in stepping into the role of a petitioner or a receiver. And while the development organization for the organization located in the municipality for us, that is the Torrington Development Corporation, it presented a good case for serving as a petitioner. The fact that they haven't participated in a development project within a five mile radius made it a little more tenuous for us to hang our hat on that. So we went with the strongest potential for success here. So as a municipality, I'm asking the council to consider serving as a petitioner in this case. In addition to petitioning the court to have the court make the determination that property is in fact abandoned, we're asking the court to appoint a receiver. The legislation, honestly, this was written so well, it's like a checklist. And you can literally go down and check off all these boxes. And in this case, when you check off the boxes as to who would be an appropriate and acceptable receiver in this situation, it again refers to a development organization or other entity with experience rehabilitating properties, with the ability to obtain and provide the necessary funding. So that steered us right to the Torrington Development Corporation, who has been our development arm of the city for the last 12 years. And we were encouraged that we were on the right path when we continued to read through the legislation where it says, in selecting the receiver, that the court would first consider the petitioner's recommendation and that of any other person in interest. And second, prioritize a development organization or government unit over an individual. So I kind of feel like this was this really was written for us in this situation as a municipality and with the Torrington Development Corporation being our partner. So if we could see the next one. So for the council members, many of you have served at one time on this development corporation or are currently serving on the development corporation. I just wanted to remind you, you know, of who it is that is serving on this corporation and how we came to the conclusion that this is a corporation that has the capacity. It certainly is a board that is populated by some heavy hitters. You know, you have a couple of attorneys, you have a CPA. You have two contractors, contracting and engineering principals. You have the director for the Northwest Chamber of Commerce. We have a bank officer. Christine Emery is a director of Primetime House, but she was also a former economic director for the city of Torrington under Owen Quinn's administration. You know, we have members that are former business owners, current business owners, and that have been running businesses for most of their professional careers. So I put this screen up because I just want to remind the council that these are the board members that can strongly represent and move a project like this forward. So I don't know, do I have another page after this? I do. So obviously, my communications and outreach to the TDC was critical. I mean, we can't make a recommendation to the council or step forward if we don't have, you know, the potential receiver in a position to be able to accept the appointment if it is confirmed. And obviously, it's it's everything sort of hinges on everybody being on the same page at the same time. And in doing so, we wanted to at least get on record with both TDC and the City Council as to what the short term goals with this legislation and this petition. And put that on the record early because at the very least, at the minimum, these are the things that we must gain in filing this petition and getting a receiver appointed. Obviously, the first thing, the first priority is to remediate the risk of the fire to the building and the adjacent properties. The second order of priority is to remediate the public nuisance, which is blighted, a blighted condition unfit for occupancy. It is certainly not presenting itself in any positive light. It certainly has been impacting businesses on Main Street from being successful. And the loss of the hotel business itself has presented some challenges with many of our local businesses and arts organizations from being able to grow their own businesses. And then obviously, remedying the risk of vagrancy, illicit uses, and unauthorized entry. Just a very quick story to tell you those concerns. You'll hear Rista talk about how many police calls have been made to the property. A couple of years ago, we assumed they were teenagers, but there was a break in in the building and the all of the fire extinguishers in the building were discharged. And there is a powder that continues to sit on all of the historic wood in the pub. There is a one of a kind historic mural in that pub. And none of that condition has been corrected. And we're just fortunate that that's all they did when they broke in. I know that there have been situations where the police have been called because neighbors have witnessed kids climbing up onto the roof of the building. And most recently, before we were able to open up our pandemic project overflow, we had homeless people sleeping under the portico on Main Street at this building. So so those are the three, I call them our urgent remediation efforts. But that is by no stretch of the imagination, all that needs to be done. So these are the things that we did internally here at City Hall from their through the council's foresight in allowing us to bring in a legal counsel to look at this from the outside perspective and provide us some advice and his take on that legislation. We engaged attorney Kevin Nelligan, who is on the phone here with us today or by Zoom. So at this point, I want to turn it over to attorney Nelligan so that he can talk a little bit about what his interpretation of this is, what his recommendations are. And then from there, I'll let Rista talk about why should we do this? You know, why is it important to do this now? And and we'll end the presentation with attorney Michelle, who can speak to you about the actions taken by the Torrington Development Corporation. So it's over to you, attorney Nelligan.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good to see everybody by Zoom, maybe someday live, not too far away. So the mayor had consulted with me, asked me to look at the the new statute along with attorney Michelle and see what the options were with the Yankee Peddler. She said that statute is very new. It's probably, we can only find one other case that's been filed in the Superior Court seeking the same kind of remedy. And the purpose of the statute is similar to what you see with a receiver pointed, say, in a bankruptcy, where the owner is unable or unwilling to do what the law requires and the court allows someone to step in and really step into the shoes of the owner. And that's what that the statute allows us to do. The process is we would file a petition with the Superior Court. And at some point, the court would assign a date where we would have a hearing. And in at that hearing, we would present our request that the Torrington Development Corporation would be appointed receiver for the property. We would submit a plan, which the mayor and her staff is pretty much already fleshed out of what work the top of the city would like to do, a rough estimate of the cost. And at that hearing, hopefully, the judge would appoint the receiver and approve the preliminary plan. And if the judge does that, then the city takes control of the property and can implement the plan, which really would be just what the mayor had laid out, the initial, most important steps the city would want to take. Secure the building, clean the building, install a fire alarm system, things like that. The statute allows the owner to object. And if at the hearing can present a realistic plan of remediation, the judge can give the the owner, you know, a time to do that, which in this case wouldn't be horrible for the city since it sounds like the owner's been unresponsive for quite some time. Obviously, if the owner fixed up the property, that's best for everybody. But at this point, that doesn't seem likely. But they do have the right to appear and object. And then the court would give them a date to come back and prove that that work has been completed. So they really would still have their feet to the fire to get that work done. The cost of the remediation by the city is reimbursable through the sale of the property or simply payment by the owner. So ultimately, the city shouldn't be out of pocket at the end of this whole process. One other remedy besides just rehabbing the place ourselves is after three months, the city can come in and ask the judge to put the to allow the city to hire a Realtor and actually sell the place. And, you know, that might be an option if we had somebody in the wings who was willing to come in and the city felt they were reliable and would finish the work, start and finish the work. That could also be another option. But the initial process is file the petition, get a date, and go on in with our evidence of of blight, fire, fire code violations, building code violations, and relate to the judge the damage to the neighborhood, neighboring properties, health and safety violations, and ask that the city be allowed to correct these. So that's how the process is supposed to work. Again, it's brand new. Litchfield Courthouse has not had one of these receivers of applications submitted before. But as the mayor said, the statute is very detailed. So it really gives a real guidepost for what the judge should be looking for and make a finding on and guide the city going forward. So that's, you know, we're all teed up, ready to go. It's just really answer whatever questions this council has and get the council's approval. If that's granted, then the petition can be filed in the next day or two.
Thank you. Before I open it to questions, I wanted Rista just to remind or inform the council as to why we feel it's critical at this stage to move forward with this process. So Rista, if you want to.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the the impact that this building is having to the community and also the benefits of revitalizing this building would have to the community. So there's about seven bullet points here in this report that I've identified as community impact. So I'm just going to kind of briefly go through them. I think most of you probably already realize these impacts. But I just want to make sure we kind of highlight why it's so critical to get this done and get this done now, not let it continue to sit this way. You know, we need to eliminate the public nuisance that is there. I think that's first and foremost. You know, as the mayor said, there's been several police calls. When we checked with the police department, since the building's been vacant, there's been over 91 police calls. As you know, probably better than anyone, you know, the city has limited resources. And when we're spending this kind of resources on one property, that becomes a nuisance. You know, in addition, there are fire code issues. And if, you know, we hear these horrible stories of these buildings that, you know, burned down in the middle of downtown and take half the downtown with them, we don't want that to happen. We need to make sure that it doesn't happen, get these fire code violations remedied. And until they're remedied, that problem, that building is still a public nuisance and can impact more than just the building itself. You know, we also need to improve the appearance of the building. It's currently a blighted building. And we know that blighted buildings, you know, impact the whole neighborhood, impact the whole surrounding area. And it impacts property values, sales of property. It discourages healthy uses that we want people, the appearance. I think you might have heard of the broken window theory. When there is a blighted property, it invites negative uses and not the uses we want to see in our downtown. So we want to eliminate those blighted conditions and improve the appearance of the building. When the building is renovated and it's operational, we know that it will create jobs downtown. We, which is part of economic development, we want to do that. We want to bring more people downtown so that the community has good paying jobs. But also, when people are downtown working, they're supporting the other businesses downtown. Having an inn allows our arts organizations, our creative economies to expand and grow and do more than what they can do now. I know several years ago, the Warner Theater was looking to bring in the New England Arts Festival to to Torrington. It was a big deal. They were one of the top runners. The sole reason they did not get that festival, it ended up in New London, was because we did not have a hotel that could service the people that would come to the festival. So, you know, there's our arts organizations are getting national, international attention and drawing people to Torrington. And we need to make sure that we encourage them to do that, that we allow them to grow, that we have a place for people to stay when they're here. So that not only are they coming for the the arts and the reasons, but they're here and they're now they're going to our restaurants, they're going to our shops, they're in our trails there and, you know, in part of our community. Our manufacturers, you know, we have a lot of international manufacturers and they bring visitors to Torrington, but they don't stay in Torrington. They take them out to lunch, they take them out to dinner, they have their meetings in Avon and the Waterbury Hotels. They're not, we want them to stay here in Torrington. All of these visits, whether it's for the arts or for manufacturing, every time somebody comes to Torrington and they stay here, they're going to support all of our other businesses. And we're going to have economic growth, economic development. Our restaurants are going to benefit, our small businesses are going to benefit. And it all hinges on having a place for people to stay when they're here. I think, you know, it's critical that we preserve the historic building. The, you know, the building was built in 1890. It is one of the iconic buildings in downtown Torrington. Downtown Torrington is listed as a historic district on the National Registry of Historic Places. And it's, you know, the Yankee Peddler is the iconic building in that district. So we need to make sure that it's protected and preserved. And the longer that it sits vacant, the more decayed, the more disrepair, the harder it is going to be to preserve it and get it back to the grandeur that it once was. So we need to do this now because we're really at that critical point where it may not be salvageable if we wait too much longer. And lastly, you know, and I think this speaks volumes of all of the the things that we're talking about is what impact has this building and the condition that it sits had to our grand list. So we went back and in tooth, you know, to the to the different revalue, revaluation years. So in 2013, a year before the property was bought by this property owner, the assessed value, you know, we're not looking at the appraised value. I'm going to look at the assessed value here, was just over $1 million. In 2016, it decreased to 400,000. In 2019, it decreased to 278,000. So in the past seven years, since this property owner has had this building, the assessed value has lowered 74%. And, you know, I think that just speaks volumes of the impact that it's having to all the community and all the surrounding properties and the the other businesses downtown. So for all of those reasons, I support this. I think this is the time to do it. I don't think we can afford to delay any longer. You know, and I'm grateful that this legislation has come across our desk and is now in place for us to act on.
Thank you, Rista. So obviously, you see where we are coming from as a city. But it doesn't work if we don't have a partner in this. And that partner is that we reached out to was Torrington Development Corporation. So I just want Vic to talk a little bit about the TDC and the role that they see that that entity being playing in this.
Sure. Thank you. The TDC actually met this morning to discuss the prospect of being appointed as the receiver in this case. And I want to start off by reading a statement that was read to the TDC by my co-chair, Peter Herbst, just so you get an idea of how we started. His, Peter's statement is as follows. As the city's redevelopment agency, this is certainly a topic within our jurisdiction. We will be focusing on a specific property, a centerpiece of the downtown, the iconic Yankee Peddler Inn. In recent years, our downtown has been greatly improved by private efforts, municipal funding, state and federal funding, infrastructure improvements, including new sidewalks, paving of Main Street, elimination of overhead utilities, upgrading Mason and Water Streets. Most recently, the Most recently, the transformation of Franklin Street to Franklin Plaza, an extraordinary public space, a venue with unlimited possibilities that looks out over the river to the outwork of a national artist, Danielle Mailer, a space that will be the northern terminus of the Nagatuck River Rail Trail. We have seen in recent years an influx downtown of the arts, restaurants, kids' play, private enterprise such as the downtown partners with new apartments, a beautiful new building on Water Street by the Torrington Savings Bank, which while serving the banking needs of a much more broader area than the city of Torrington, has shown us that its heart is still in downtown Torrington. And of course, the ever-important presence of the Warner Theater, which deteriorated after the flood of 55 and came within weeks of the wrecking ball in the 1970s, only to be brought back back over time to its initial grandeur. What we have seen downtown in recent years is an extraordinary investment of time, effort, and money, not only at the municipal, state, and federal level, but by private individuals as well. Almost everyone is stepping up to the plate. Almost everyone. There's been one notable exception, the current owners of the Yankee Peddler. For years, the TDC and Mayor Carbone, long before she was mayor and she was serving on the TDC, have been concerned about the Peddler, one of downtown's most iconic building, buildings, which under its current absentee ownership has been neglected and to characterize it as neglected is putting it mildly. The Peddler's tenants, its businesses on the first floor are all gone. The inn is gone, the restaurant and bar shuttered. It is a shell of what it once was. It's tragic in the sense that it was preventable. It is a major hindrance, the major hindrance to the downtown's continued revialation, revitalization. The Peddler now has been documented by a fire and police, by fire and police officials to be a fire and safety hazard. Fire and police officials are very concerned about its present condition. It is in the midst of our dynamic downtown. What has happened to the Peddler is a crime, literally a crime. One of the owners has been arrested due to the condition of the property. His case is currently pending in the Torrington Courthouse. The mayor, working with the fire chief and the police chief, has spent an enormous amount of time trying to resolve the Yankee Peddler problem and to find a way forward. Now finally, there is a way forward. This meeting was called because now there is a way forward to resolve the Peddler problem. And the Torrington Development Corporation, as the city's redevelopment agency, has a very important and active role to play as the city goes forward, taking the necessary action to resolve the problem. Throughout the last several months, during this time of COVID, the TDC's executive committee has been meeting with the mayor and discussing a recent piece of legislation, a Connecticut state law that the mayor brought to our attention, a law that will be integral to the resolution of the Yankee Peddler problem. So Peter read this to the, to the TDC board at our meeting this morning. And we discussed basically what Kevin, Attorney Kevin Nelligan, has explained to you about the process to become appointed as a receiver of this organization. And the TDC voted unanimously to accept such appointment in the event it comes along. So we certainly would endorse the proposition that that the mayor is asking the city council to vote on tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Vic. So at this point, I want to open the floor for questions. But I'm, I'm almost thinking that it's best to do it in the form of a motion. After I get a motion and a second, I'll open the floor for discussion questions. And then we can take action on the motion. So item two, item two is that I would be seeking, and I'm going to modify the motion a little bit, and and this can be part of the discussion. I will be looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to pursue the use of this new legislation relative to abandoned and blighted properties, including the commencement of legal proceedings relative to the property located at 93 Main Street and 30 Maiden Lane and contingent, and contingent on the court's appointment of the Torrington Development Corporation as receiver, establish an appropriation of funds from the City of Torrington Bladed Properties Funds up to $60,000 to be set aside in the general fund for use by the TDC to stabilize the building at 93 Main Street and bring the building into code compliance. The terms of the use of those funds would be determined and brought back to the city council at a later date. So do I have a motion to approve that too? Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move it. Councilman Rubino.
Councilman Rubino.
Second. I will second.
Okay, and seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Okay, so now the floor is open for questions and discussion. Are there questions? Discussion?
I have no questions. This was the second time I saw it since it was presented at the TDC this morning at 8 o'clock. Well done in terms of the mayor and certainly the executive committee of TDC to really explore this particular legislation and to move forward with it. So it will have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Mayor.
Mr. Kevin Arrow, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yes, I support the initiative going forward. I think we do have to find some solution to this. Clearly, it's a hindrance, you know, clearly it needs to be done somehow. So my questions really are involved in the specific process that we're using for that. So my question is to Attorney Nelligan. I guess this is fairly new test case or or use of this statute. Just a general question, do you see any issues as for our, I guess, TDC filing, filing as the receivership when we have local contractors? Are there conflicts of interest? I'm always concerned when governments get involved in things that that the courts look for conflicts of interest. Could that be something that hurts us in this particular case?
No, I think the statute calls for a development corporation to be appointed. So, you know, we couldn't, my reading of the session is we couldn't ask, you know, one of our construction companies to be the receiver. So there's only a limited.
I see. Okay.
That the court's going to allow you to have a point. So the TDC is right up, I think, with the statute's contemplating.
All right. And what happens in terms of? Let me think. If we win, so can you map out for me or the mayor? If we win the case and TDC takes ownership of this, right?
Well, they don't own it, but they step into the shoes of the owner, effectively. They can do everything an owner would do. It's still be in, the title will still be in the name of the LLC.
Okay, so who now becomes responsible, assuming we win this case? Who becomes responsible for paying for and determining what the upgrades to this unit require? And who's going to pay for that?
Well, we, as receiver, we can propose whatever we want. And it's up, the judge will give the stamp of approval on it. And that's what we would submit at the first hearing. You don't have to submit anything at the first hearing. You could just be appointed, but you got to come back within 100 days, 20 days with a plan. Otherwise, the judge will remove you as receiver. But we have enough records and material that we could submit a plan at the initial hearing and ask the judge to to approve it. And then if he or she does, then the TDC can start implementing it. The money would be fronted by the by the city and the costs would be reimbursed through a lien on the property, just like a mortgage. And it would take priority, although the mortgage appears to be, to be paid off. Our costs and lien would be priority, priority over any other lien.
Okay, so. So in a sense, we, the city, would become, again, responsible for paying for the upgrade to this, right? Whatever is determined by the court to be required to get this to a what, a point of, to be able to sell it is, I mean, what?
The court would not tell us what to do. The court would approve what we want to do. So if we, for instance, just want to secure the building, get a sprinkler system in, the court wouldn't say, yeah, but I also want you to do the roof. You know what I mean? It would be, we propose what we want to do. The court's just making sure we don't go too far or that we really do have a plan. So we're in control of the work we want to do as long as we can show it is a violation of a fire code, building code, et cetera, and that we have a plan to do it.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm just being dense here. I'm just trying to figure out if we spend local monies to do upgrades here, where do, when, at what point does the city get that back?
Right. So it would be, for instance, you could, a couple of ways you could go. But if you just secured the building, rehabbed it enough, for instance, to rent out the spaces, fire code violations cured, you could stop there, then go ask the judge for permission to sell it. And if the judge allows you to sell it, you would be recouped at the sale.
Okay, so to that point, I mean, my understanding from what I'm hearing from the presence of the dilapidated condition of this building, which is required for it to fall into this category of us to apply the statute, right? It's a significant cost, right, to get this to the point where people would actually, customers would actually come and pay money to use it, right? I mean, that's going to be a significant cost. And I'm trying to figure out who's fronting that money.
Well, I think, and the mayor can speak to that. The initial cost, I think, is like, is approximately 50,000 or 60,000 for the code violation corrections.
But that's not going to get it to the point of sale.
Yeah, you're not going to have it so tense.
A long shot, right?
Right, right. So you have options. You can just advance the money to the city. You can actually ask the judge for permission to get a loan, you know, and and really, but that's, you know, millions of dollars probably to completely rehab that place.
I, I, that's what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm trying to connect us taking receivership of this property and the the significant cost in getting it to a point where corporate execs are renting that place or well-heeled tourists from New York are renting, are booking rooms in that place. I'm trying to figure out.
I think, I mean, I'll.
With that, and and what liability the city, or what's the responsibility of the city and the TDC at that point to bridge that big financial gap there?
Yeah, you don't have any responsibility. You don't have to do any of that. And I guess that would be a decision that would be made after the initial work is done, to secure the property, keep it from burning down, keeping vagrants from staying, things like that. Then I think, you know, and Vic can speak to this and the mayor, what the plan would be as far as transferring it or selling it or investing and really becoming a project manager on the whole rehab of the of the building.
Okay, so step one, our liability is simply to, to all these things that we say are code violations, our problem, to fix those code violations, right?
That's the initial step, I think.
Correct. And and that's still not even close to getting it to selling. But we're just concerned right now with this action to remit, to remediate the the code violations. Is that technically correct exactly?
And remember, you haven't been in the building, I don't think, for a long time. So who knows what we're going to find when we get in the building?
No, I haven't been in it for like 15 years. I don't remember much because it was a party, so.
So if I add, Attorney Nelligan is is absolutely right. I mean, obviously, nobody wants to throw good money after bad. You know, if this property, there's a tipping point, you know, that you're investing money that you're not going to get a return on, you know. So clearly, the TDC is going to be measuring all of that. So the urgent need, obviously, is stabilizing the building, eliminating the the life and property safety issues, assess that building as to what would it really cost for a full development, and make a determination and a recommendation to the court at that time. If, I, I, I find it hard to believe that the Torrington Development Corporation wants to undertake a full sale, redevelopment of this property as a hotel, and then sell it at the end of that development. I think that there's a, there's a point of no return, that they have to say, this is, this is where we are and the best, the recommendation to the court is what is in the best interest of the property, the city, and even the property owner. Because keep in mind, this property owner still owns this. He still has an interest in this.
I got that, Mayor. I, I get that now. So again, this action is specifically to stabilize that property as a viable property for development and then resale. And we're, at this point, by taking this action, we're going no further than stabilizing it.
Well, that wouldn't be our decision. That's the TDC's decision as the receiver. But as a municipality, what I'm asking is, as a municipality, that we would be prepared to provide resources up to $60,000 to TDC for stabilization. Beyond that, TDC can make their own decisions as to how far they want to go with rehabilitation and where those resources would be generated. But those would not be matters for the city council. Those would be matters for the TDC board.
At that point, it's on them. Okay. And the TDC at that point is firewalled and separate and distinct from the city. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I think I'm, I cede the floor. Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? The floor is still open on the motion. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, then I'm going to call the votes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so we have five in favor, none opposed. I don't see that Drake joined us, did he? Okay, good. So motion carries. And there being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Oliver, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. I think this is a great next move for the city, and I appreciate your, your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mayor, good night all.